Alright, alright guys. I do apologize, I had to abruptly stop the live. My service was terrible. It was just buffering. And I know it was basically making us behind on Critical Smokers Live. I do apologize, I had to abruptly stop the live. I hope you guys tune back in, but I had to. So we back? Let's do a formal start to this again, one more time. Let's get it. Leader, they wanna hear from the mayor, if y'all ain't learnt that yet. The mayor, not the trustees, that don't do nothing, that only run they mouth. Y'all don't do no work, no work. Y'all forget I am the leader. Alright, I do apologize y'all, I had to abruptly get off of the live. I think we doing much better. It was buffering a lot. It was buffering to the point that I was getting behind in the video. So I knew I had to restart my program. I do apologize. Thank you for everyone who was tuning in, I appreciate you guys. Leader. Send the notifications out. Send them out one more again YouTube. Come on, be nice to me. My service was messed up. Thank you for coming back y'all, I appreciate you. My service was messing up. It was buffering, so we gotta work it great. Shout out to Critical Smoker, again. We appreciate you for all you do. Glad that we was able to tune in on this live Thornton Township special meeting. I'm gonna say shout out to Levi family, cuz I'm gonna erase the other video, I wanna say thank you guys for checking on me this weekend, this week. I've been getting inbox checking on me, thank you. I finally got my voice back. Though that whatever it was, it went through my whole body. I went through temperature 101 for two days. Then, I started coughing up like a crackhead. I lost my voice. Oh, I just went to all the phases. For God be the glory, we made it through and I'm back. Still trying to get my voice back, so thank you so much for the praise cuz I do you guys have noticed a lot of the work I've been putting in. And the people who know me in the background know that I do much more than just the YouTube thing. So I kinda stretch myself, to stretch myself. Don't pay mind of me, I missed y'all. Hit the like, hit the like, hit the like. Who you with? Who is like y'all? I'm just having fun. Welcome, y'all know what I do. Crack a few jokes. Have a little fun while we be stressed out with a bird. A bird is taking us through too much. I do have a lineup. But because this can showed up, you know. Wasn't sure about the time, we could, we gonna rehash it. The Dalton meeting and a few highlights as I mentioned. I wanna talk about, wanna talk about Keith Freeman. His ass. You wanna talk about a little bit Janet Johnson? Hell she, remember we brung her up? It was so crazy, they talking about her in the meeting the next week. I told y'all I'm psychic. Now I ain't know they was gonna talk about Janet Johnson. I was like, who is Janet Johnson? Obstruction. I'm just playing y'all. I missed y'all. They like, yeah, you know when person lost a voice, come back to talking. Talking, 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 talking. Hey you. My son, kids, kid, own husband, and I was sick for the last two weeks. Oh my guy. I'm so sorry. My patient mother was like, girl, these people sick for 10 days. I was like, don't put that devil on me. Tomorrow would've made seven. So, I'm glad everybody got it done at once. Cuz you know how it is as a mother. I don't know, how you can handle that? Six kids, I bow down. My two be having me stressed. You a special kinda mama. You amazing, I'm gonna give it to you. I'm just talking. My, um, I can tell, I can tell. Because I, when I did that take care of myself, well my son helped me. And my favorite resident coach made through the whole thing. It was terrible. I understand, I totally understand. You have six kids, girl. The patient, one of my PD patients, the parent has six. And they autistic. And I feel so like empathetic. So I'm gonna give you all the love and blessings, hey you. I bow down. God be the glory. You got this. I'm glad you doing better. You wondering what's going on, they gonna show up? What is this? Why the lawyer there? She's always on the screen like that? She probably couldn't show up. Cuz the last Thornton meeting, we had the other guy there, so they just take turns. I guess it's her this week. Oh. Let me see, can I, um, shout out to my favorite resident for keeping me up to date, keeping us up to date. It says, dear residents, to ensure safety and orderly board meeting tonight, we are implementing key modifications and ask for you to understand and cooperate. So they did the location change upstairs, smaller room, limited access, board members supervisor, accredited media will be allowed inside. No employees in the bathroom. All employees, residents and guests will be directed to the overflow room where the meeting will be broadcasted live on screen. Security measures, we will have security in place to ensure a safe and respectful environment for all attendees. These measures are in place to maintain order, transparency and safety for all. Please note orderly rules. We'll be strictly enforced. We appreciate your participation and commu- uh, commitment, I apologize, to a respectful process. So this was brought to you from the desk of Gonzalez, Weedman and Carlys. Carmen. Carlys. I said it right, my favorite resident? Bruh. You know I got him missing. So today, I'm, we, let me get the agenda. Gotta do the flashback. It was a busy week. We had Clark step out of the race, thanking Jesus. We made an update about that. We have Jedidiah protests two days in a row. That was great to see. The, um, objection against Napoleon was dropped, so we don't need to listen to the hearing on the 10th. Even though they were really pushing it to the limit with this Napoleon thing and the hearings being so pushed out, it was ridiculous. So, we go. Let's see what he say.
Good evening, everybody. We're gonna go ahead and get started.
Alright. I see, we go live today. You amazing.
Okay, yup, there you go. We thought we lost you for a second. Okay, we would like to call the Thornton Township trustee meeting for Thursday, February 26th. Uh, to order, please.
February 26th.
Trustee Carlisle, present.
Trustee Weedman, present.
Okay, we'll do the pledge of allegiance, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Before we get started, I know we missed putting public comment on here, but I would like to make a motion to add public comment at this time.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call for trustee Weedman?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Carlisle?
Yes.
Motion man.
Excuse me, attorney, I have a question. Um, because trustee Gonzalez is running the meeting, do we have to make a motion to appoint him as the chair?
Yes.
I'll make the motion to appoint trustee Gonzalez as the chair for the meeting today, Thursday, February 6, 2025. I'll second.
Trustee Carlisle?
Yes.
Trustee Weedman?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes. Right, um, thank you. Yes, if I could, uh, we, uh, it was a mistake that public comment wasn't put on the agenda. Um, however, obviously, um, we do wanna hear, uh, any of the public who wishes to make a comment, we should, we could do so now. Uh, but like I said, it was, it was an error, not something potentially was done. So, uh, we could go ahead and do that now and then, uh, you know, proceed. Okay.
This is. This is the Thornton Township meeting, baby.
Right, also, since I got, we got a minute or so, um, as you can see, we're missing a few people, but that's okay. Um, so it may be a little messy, as far as just getting going, um, but you know, we got some business to do, we'll take care of that and hopefully it won't be a long meeting. And, uh, we'll take it from there.
Girl, we barely holding on here. You know I'm coming out from the sickness. Trying to figure it out. Came and Critical Smoker was live, I was like, hold up, dawg.
Okay, okay, so no, no, somebody signed up for a public comment, so we'll move on. Uh, the first, the next item is own business. Um, own business, uh, we have two items.
I have a question, um, about these items. Are we just discussing the items tonight? And then we'll make, you know, a decision at a later date?
Yup, yup, that was my understanding as well, that, uh, put them on for discussion, um, and then we'll take a vote at a later time. Uh, so do we wanna, should we do, how do you guys wanna do, do we do first and second, and then any discussion, or do you just wanna leave it for, uh, the closed session?
If, if I may, you can do a motion just to call it for discussion.
Mm-hmm.
If the board does not intend to take any action on it, the agenda item listed on the agenda does allow for action to be taken, but the intention of the board is simply to have the discussion that is allowed. Just do a motion to call the item for discussion, have that seconded, and then begin the discussion.
Okay, and then after that, we could, um, whatever action, I mean, meeting, whether it be tabled or whatever, we could do that after the discussion, um, on both items, or?
Correct, correct. If you wanted to table it to the next board meeting, you can certainly do that. Uh, or to some other date certain, or just table it indefinitely, obviously.
Okay.
Wanna have it on the next board meeting or the board meetings come with near future. So, that's a suggestion.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll make, I'll make a motion, um, to discuss the revised 2425 budget for general assistance. Orderment's number 24009, sorry. Second. Okay, so, one thing I do wanna discuss, um, one of, one of my biggest.
She's gonna call the role.
Oh.
Yup.
Okay, trustee Whitman?
Yes.
Trustee Carlisle?
Yes.
Trustee, I'm sorry, supervisor protest Gonzalez?
Yes.
And if I may, just to be clear, that is not a motion and adoption, but is it just for discussion?
It was a motion to discuss. So, um, I just wanted to give the public this opportunity to see an accurate budget. The revised budget that they're proposing is on the township website. If you go, um, in the upper right-hand corner to the drop-down bars, there's a, a drop-down there that says financials. If you click on that, all three of the budgets that, that are being proposed are listed there. Um, I have been working, I've had a, some emails, um, some back and forths with the finance director who has been answering questions and, you know, things along those lines. So, for, for me, um, this was more an opportunity for the public to have a view of what is being proposed and then have, although it may be a small timeframe to ask questions, to still be able to ask questions and, and, you know, kinda have an understanding of, of what's happening here. So, um, you know, everybody, we, we know, you know, during public comments, there may not be answers. But I do have an email address, I would always be more than willing to, to answer questions. So, I'm available at any time.
Any other discussion?
So now we make a motion to table item one?
Um, if that's the action.
So, sorry, correct, yes.
So I'll make the motion to table the adopted revised 2024, 2025 budget until, um, till a later date.
I'll second.
Okay, trustee Carlisle?
Yes.
Trustee Weedman, right?
Yes.
Supervisor protest Gonzalez?
Yes.
I'm sorry, one, one quick question. When was that table till? I couldn't hear.
You said until, she just said until a later date.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Is that okay, before I move?
Yes, that's fine. Uh, yeah, you guys can just put it on a future agenda, it gives you a little bit of flexibility.
Yeah, correct, cuz the meeting's next week, so I'm not sure. You know, yeah, we, we don't wanna box ourselves in like that, so, okay.
Understood.
I would like to make a motion to table the budget for general fund, budget number 24010, until a later date.
Second.
Trustee Weedman?
Yes.
Trustee Carlisle?
Yes.
Supervisor protest Gonzalez?
Yes.
I'm motion there.
Alright, next item on the agenda is closed session.
I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session?
Second.
Do I have to say that to discuss thing? Should I include that?
You have a motion, you have to make a motion for closed session.
To go into closed session to discuss hiring, discipline, performance compensation, compensation and the dismissal of certain personnel, legal counsel, real estate matters pending probate or imminent litigation.
Trustee Weedman?
Yes.
Trustee Carlisle?
Yes.
Supervisor protest Gonzalez?
Yes.
Going to closed session at 4:28.
So I guess this is where they're gonna be discussing these employees and disciplinary actions. Hold on one second, y'all. I'm still fighting off my. But I guess they're gonna go back there and talk about Kamal. Talk about Haniair. The housing director, they goons. Tiffany might as well just quit. I think at this point Tiffany might as well just quit. She didn't show up for the Dalton meeting. Things are moving forward, moving smoothly. We gonna talk about Dalton meeting. And then she didn't show up for here. What y'all think Tiffany doing? What do y'all think she plotting and planning? Find of Kamal, crazy man. Him and a few other people. Um, so, just to verify, what I'm finding out, what kinda realizing is, cuz you know I can't stand this man, cuz I keep saying it, I kept saying his name. Now I don't even wanna say his name again. What's this guy name? Krigley? Oh, you know when you just don't like somebody. He doesn't work for the town. But that was one of the things I was kinda inquired about when I talked about the Lori Lightfoot report. The bank can find out who checks went, who these checks went to. Cuz what I was explaining is that the unauthorized money came from an account, from a bank, not someone's drawer. That was the clip that I left out of last night's live. So, even if this check sitting on the desk and they were replaced by Haniair and she signed them without other people, the bank knows what checks was processed and who they went to. So if there was a series of check that went to someone like example Krigley, that is not, you don't need a subpoena for that. That's what I was trying to explain to people. I love you guys, I be knowing y'all, be trying to come up with all the best excuses and reason why things are done. But sometimes when it's right in your face, you gotta say wait. Those are things that's discoverable. I do think, we gonna get into, I do think that it says, no, he has all the Airbnbs from properties Dalton used to have and supposedly we have furniture sent to them. Yes, but I, if that's true, that's something that would maybe hard. Let me put your comment on the screen. Honey Moon, I love it, I'm glad you here. That may be something hard to prove. But by way of the checks that went to these vendors, you see what I'm saying? Why couldn't we see that? She, she should have mentioned Krigley, um, you know, like, and it's not getting on Lightfoot because ju- it's just me being, having that audit a type of mindset and quality assurance, there's a way you could get this information without it being so complicated. And that's why I was saying, it's obstruction going on and still to this day in Dalton. It's, it's still going on because if they wanted it clean, they would've just gave the information. And hold on one second, I'm, my stupid throat wanna make me my cough, hold on. And one thing I gotta acknowledge, because I always have these conversations and my favorite residents always make me know to, you know, to look at both sides. And I know it's not easy for people to be under pressure at their jobs and get forced to do things they don't wanna do. But the same standards that I keep for myself, I keep for people. So if I been and I go the route that a doctor or, or a place wanted me to do and I knew it was wrong, I knew that I will face some liability. I'm just that type of person that'll take that L and say, nah, I'm not about to do it. I'm walking away. I know most people won't. It's not judging you by calling out what it is. Eventually, you're gonna get caught in the tide. I said the same thing, I said, if they ever do a Rico on a hospital, we all going to jail. Cuz we keep acting like we don't know what the hell going on, but we know. So that's all I'm saying. I do think the residents need to keep their eyes open on everybody. Um, and we gonna go into Keith Freeman, cuz I'm totally not comfortable with him. Who's this lady? I guess this is all media that's out there, we waiting for them to come out of closed session. But, can I do it? Can I do it? Uh, you know I'm hard-headed. Y'all know I'm hard-headed. I am putting, what they call, APB, APB? What you calling when you looking for somebody? Tell me what it is. Tell me what I'm looking for. I am looking for Trina. Where is my Trina, y'all? Where is my Trina? Shut up, my favorite resident. She said, don't you do it. I don't care. I love everybody, everybody may not love me. What's going on with Trina? Somebody go knock on her door, make sure she good. I don't care whose side she on. This is the reason why Trina got fired. Nobody shows this article from November 2021. Dalton woman inherit four-figure water bill with house. And things have kept getting worse since. Now I know it's been some rumors about her water bill, but maybe they satisfied it because of this shit. Trina, come out the bushes. Grace Levi, I miss you. I like to hear from everybody. I made that face to only one person in my audience. I had to do it. I miss her and I do care about her well-being. So y'all let me know how Trina's doing, if y'all out there, I know she quiet. And you know, everybody doing they thing, but I just wanna make sure my boo is good. Like, uh-huh. I waste time to pot up Grace. I know, look at Honey Moon like, oh lord, why you say it one more time and my boo gonna pop up? She gonna be like, what you say? I'm like, I missed you. Where you been, girl? I have, oh, I have a love for everyone in Dalton in their own way. You know, we are not connected, but I look at people as human beings. Besides who they wanna be connected to, not connected to. I see a lot of people falls and I pray for them. But, like I say, if it's not bothering me, you know, me and her not doing anything, she don't go after me. And, you know, I can't say too much. If I saw her attacking me just out of the blue and I felt like she just come out her mouth and just attack people, I probably may not talk about Trina. But I don't see, I know her, her tone is, yeah, out there, but it be some logic behind it. So, I just gotta give it to her. Anyway, what y'all think is gonna happen after this? What do you think is gonna be Haniair's next trick up her sleeve for Thornton, cuz she already pulled out allegedly, um, hiring a chief of police? Today we were gonna, um, hold on. Y'all see, I'm still coughing, right? It was bad. It was bad. Today we were gonna go over a little bit more about the Lexus case, that was my plan. And I had an update, you know, about Officer Perez and Carlton. But I do have an update for Dalton and some of the things that's missing from your police station. Not only, not only just a police chief. There's important bodies and, um, check and balance system that's missing and I verified it, you know, and they, and it's within y'all laws and y'all codes, y'all supposed to have these certain boards there in place and the police station doesn't have it. We'll talk about that in detail, but we're missing a lot in Dalton. So that's why I said it's not good to just look at surface things. You have to deep dive. And I'm glad that a lot of people are starting to pay attention to the content that I put out there cuz it's, it's very deep. It makes you think. You come up with ideas, I come up with ideas, and it's not always about the mess and controlling the narrative and, you know, like, it's a little like critical thinking, what the hell is going on? Who the hell done did it? I'm telling, I'll be like, ooh, it was this one right here. And we still, it be bad. It's gonna be exposed anyway. So, I appreciate you guys. Thank you so much. Y'all see me over here buying time. I have, um, some other updates as well. But I wanted to kinda show y'all the updates instead of just talk about it. I took a few off the screen. We do have a few case updates. Alright, cuz I'm gonna have to read one of them to y'all today anyway. As far as Dalton, there's some business license that are still pending. Yes, is a big issue. In the first case that we read was Pablo's in some. Insom Junior. Um, that's when I still have to update. But Pablo's. He has an amendment, amended complaint as of one seventeen. It's about a twenty-five page document and I have it. And we gonna check it out. So he amended his complaint. That lawsuit is still going. Um, the other licensee issues is Woody's, you know, the barbecue joint. They had a here, they have a hearing coming up on two eleven. So I'm gonna, you know, type this out and put it in the community. I have a hearing for two eleven. And, um. There was a put in for extension on one seven. So I believe that that was Woody's and they have the Woody's ver- Woody, uh. Woody versus Freeman, but that's actually Thornton Township and Tiffany Henryard. Okay, and, uh, yeah, so they have a status hearing on two eleven, two thousand twenty-five. Because they did ask for extension on one seven. So they're still looking for more evidence. I guess they're still trying to get people compelled to bring in what they need, but that has not stopped yet. Uh, who else? Gardener, Yvette Towing. On one thirty, that case is still pending. Um, they asked for extension. So in that, when I say they, i- is pertaining to Tiffany's side Thornton Township. So we're gonna still pay attention to that. That case is open on one thirty. They asked for extension. We're gonna look into that. And then, so today, what I wanted to do after the Thornton review, I was just gonna go onto Pablo's. See what they talking about. I ain't read a twenty-five page document, but you know what I do. We kinda get it raw. So I have that. That was the plan. And the other updates I wanted to give you related to Thornton Township. Is actually the Thrasher case and the Lawrence case. And we read those most recently and they had to do with the school board and it had to do with Freeman. And Henryard in one case, and then it was, um, Henryard and, um, Andrew Holmes on the other case. Basically trying to get those two men, which one is Lawrence, one is this Thrasher. To be convinced to put Delgado as the lawyer for the school board. And you know, a couple of weeks ago, Delgado got his ass in. The third time was a charm. That's why we really have to be on it. Gotta stop them in their foot, cause Henryard keeps on. So Delgado got another bag. So with that case, um. The Thrasher case, one twenty-seven. They're set for, um, sorry. Wait one second. Pray for my throat. Um, they're, they're due for to. They have a set motion hearing. It's basically a deadline for Thornton Township. I guess this is the last time chance on two twenty-seven to provide everything they need to before they take it to trial. So two twenty-seven is Thrasher's update before they take it to trial. Lawrence case. Um, as of one twenty-one, we're still waiting for a reply from Thornton Township. When it comes to the motions, they going back and forth. So those are the updates I had as far as the court dates, just a few, cause I still got more and I was just like, I'm just gonna wait. Um, and I'm still working on the Cook County cases. God give me a route where I can get these cases for you, cause you know, I like to read them and make them exciting. So I was making dinner, trying to listen at the same time. Well, glad, I hope my coughing, that's why I try to press mute. I don't wanna be coughing like shit. Coughing on my food. Love you. Thank you for being here. Honey Moon, what'd you say, um, to this meeting? Okay, it said, it was the trustees that called this meeting and it's about two, it's about her boo thing, Kamal. So I guess she don't want to be part of what you think, Grace. She, I don't know, cause Tiffany is like me. You can't figure it out, honestly. You can't figure her out. You know, the move, the jack move she pulled in Dalton with the chief of police. You don't know what she about to pull here. But I think, let's, let's pray because she scared of this woman right here. Cause Weedman came in there looking like a little short boxer. Today, I ain't know, I told you, she be looking a little, let me put my, my next favorite trustee on it. She came in there looking brawly. Tiffany may not show up with the shit. But I can't say that, cause. Uh, Weedman was there when they set it off in the back, so. I don't know what to expect from this girl. I can't tell you. This lady right here is crazy. Alright, y'all. That's why I haven't been talking a lot too. This live may not be long, cause the more I talk, the more I start coughing. I'm gonna, um, while y'all watching this, let me know. I can, I don't wanna miss anything, so I wanna let y'all to watch it. I'm going to warm up my coffee, my tea getting my throat. You see I'm sounding all scratchy? Like a truck driver. Yes, Tiffany, um, Weedman is definitely for these next four months. She's needed. And I, I, and you know, if there was a way to get her to. You know how they be sounding. I always got a raspy voice, so when I get sick, my voice be like. It's alright. Love me for who I am, guys. I said I was gonna go to my patient house and if they was like, you was sick, I was gonna be like. Gotta have some fun. You gotta make jokes to yourself, you know what I'm saying? I was looking at the budget while we're talking and they are on Thornton Township website. Now, when I'm look at the proposed budget, I'm gonna have to look at this and then compare it to maybe like the spending that was happening before, kinda look. So I can make it make sense. I don't wanna just bring it on the screen and start talking like, yeah, look at this, look at this. Cause you know me, I start going left like. And y'all be watching me return. So I do have those three, as she said, proposed budgets that's up. Thank you. Damn, I always sound like a truck driver. I'm just, thank you. I appreciate you. My voice sound like. Maybe hopefully the, uh, StreamYard is doing me some justice. Uh, you know I like to have fun, y'all. It is what it is. Yeah, but I was looking at the budget. I just looked at when Weedman said it was up, so I kinda glanced at it. But, um, yeah, shout out to Critical Smoker. You know, we right, we, we streaming off his stream. Thank you for allowing us. I know you did. I know you said, I'm just cracking jokes. I said, so I sound fine to you and then I sound, I feel like I sound like this. So I said, damn, do I sound like a trucker all day, every day? That's me. I'm cracking jokes. You know I love it. Shout out to you, Ohio. Ohio's in the house. House, 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 house. How's everything going down there? It's cold? It's freezing. It's freezing down there, girl? Oh, back to what I was just. I was saying, the budget, what I was just looking in that little bit, right second, when we put on the screen, y'all know I pulled it up with my silly ass. I'm, I'm ridiculous. And you know I did. I'm gonna look at it. The numbers don't look too crazy. Because y'all know I looked at this a lot, but I can't just go off the top of my head like I'm an expert in Thornton. But they look about the same. What I don't like, that I'm consistently still seeing, is this stupid Harvey pantry. But, but I will say. From my assessment earlier, I will have to say, I have to keep in mind that it's seventeen municipalities. I don't know if seventeen of them goes to this place though. So that, you know, this Harvey pantry shit get on my damn nerves, but y'all already know I looked at it a little bit while she was talking. And, um. It's not looking too bad, but I'm not a Thornton expert. I don't know everything. But I do got a good memory of some of the documents that I saw. And I knew, I remember averages that they were spending. And I know that damn pantry was doing six million in one year. So these are three proposed budget for three different funders. Like one is. One is the bridge funding ordinance, the assist, uh, general assistant. Um, fund and the general fund. So each of them have money allocated to it. What I did see in the general fund, general assistant, each of them had three million allocated to that food pantry. And until they figure out what's going on at that food pantry, you know, I ain't gonna take a whole glass and shut the fuck up. Not at all. Not at all. I know people eating, I know they getting food, but. I was looking at, look, I started talking about food. They talking about growing food. Um, but what I saw, let me, let, let me see. Man. Let's pull it on the screen. I still got my eye on it when they come out of the, um, thing. Let me put on the screen. Y'all see me, but don't let me look at this shit. I was like, wait, what's going on around here? Tax refund project. Whoa, did they approve it? Damn, I see too much. Soon as I hit the page, y'all. What's that? I haven't seen that before. We had to verify what that is. Is that Tiffany, um, taxpayer number? Did they approve it? What we got going on? Alright, y'all saw it here. Let me see if there's anything else. They not, they not back in the session yet, y'all. Let me zoom out. Y'all saw that? The hell going on around here? Okay. They have their liability insurance payment here. This is the general assistant funds. Remember when the clerk said it was approved and fixed it once? Uh, Alicia brought it up. Hmm, makes me wonder. Yeah, y'all saw that? Damn, Grace, why you always finding some shit? Y'all better go figure it out. The hell? That's why I was like, what is that tax project? Am I tripping? Should I take a screenshot? I know somebody else gonna put it on Thornton Politics. I don't put a lot of Thornton Politics, cause they don't, they don't mind of me. So I say, fuck it. Somebody else put it out there. But yeah, what the hell? It's the wrong thing that's highlighted. Hold on, where is it? I zoom right on in and y'all find it for me? How, how you gonna look at it, then you, you lost it real quick? Tax project. There we go. Still a little sick in the head. They ain't start yet, y'all. Let's take a screenshot. Take a picture of it. Write it down. The hell is this? I'm saying in my Haitian voice. Alright, let's zoom out so I can see what I'm looking at. That's why I said I wanted to look at this, not on the screen with y'all, cause my eyes just start digging. You that, that's what you think? Aw, damn. Y'all go figure it out. Let me know. Grace with my hunting, my nosy ass. What's this? Alright, thank you. Two thousand dollars, cause all you need is to come clean that computer and maintain it. And make sure that you have your, um, spyware on it. Thank you. Comments? Who leave the vision? Contract services. See, that's why I wanna look at it. Y'all got, okay, Harvey food tan- pantry. I'm all staring. I'm over here. This don't look as bad. A pantry food purchase is one million dollars. Oh, whoa. That's better than six million dollars. Let's go look at, aw, gee, we don't have time today. We gotta compare it. Cause the last time I remember that, this was a big ass number. Six million, remember? I was like, what the? Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. We gonna compare this. I remember. That number ain't looking too big this time. Did Weedman put her damn foot down on that ass, Keith? Take it in a snicker, Freeman? No more six million dollars. No more six million dollars in that, going in that Harvey pantry. Let's see. Other expensive, and the donation, you remember the donation was really high? The, yeah, that's what it was. The food purchase was like eight hundred thousand dollars or something. And then the food pantry donations was high. And I was trying to figure out how did that work? We gonna revisit this thing. Because that's what I'm, this, 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 Keith, you better be quiet. Sorry you got a bad hit, baby, but I'm about to ride you like a dog now. Alright, y'all know what we looking for, right? Okay. This is the general assistant fund. Let me put my nosy, oh, y'all. They ain't start yet. They ain't start yet. Let me put them back on the screen so y'all don't get nervous with Grace. Y'all know I be multitasking. I got y'all. I got you. Hit the like button. I'm up. Okay, we still waiting. So they still, I just wanted y'all to know that I'm, I knew that this, I'm true to this. I, I see what we still got going on around here. Let me go pull up the other one. That was, uh, general assistant fund. Damn, I said I wasn't gonna do this. And look at me. I'm like, I can't do it that fast, but hey, y'all got a break. Y'all know me. I keep myself busy. Listen to them. Listen to them. Any thoughts, anybody, on what I done put out there, right? Anybody? Don't worry. When they replay what they do here, honeymoon, you know they be quiet watching. And then they go run somewhere else. Film or whatever it is. Or use their own shit. And then I just go on to the next thing. So only are truly live our family interacts with us when we put that stuff out there, cause they help us think. You know what I'm saying? So I understand we got people in the bushes still, but you could come out and talk. You could think. It's okay. I don't own none of this information. If I find it right in front of you, the next person go take it and you're like, whoa, I just say, fuck it. As long as the residents figured this shit out at this point. Just, just do what you got to do. Alright, let me pull up the other one. Oh, I'm so nosy. Girl, you nosy. And you nosy. Did y'all miss me? I miss y'all. I thought I even had a, um, general assistant fund. And I'm over here singing. Y'all know I like this. I was like, damn, I gotta get myself back together. I haven't been loud, my voice. God, I'm, soon as I go on, I'm like, what's up? My marketing voice. Alright, they still, um, talking. Let me see, can I go into the other one? The general fund. So in, real estate taxes hoping to come in, in the general assistant fund is seven point four million dollars. In the general fund, five point one million dollars, they kinda hoping to come in. So that's over, that's twelve million. What's the tax levy? Alright, let me put it on the screen, y'all. Put it on the glass. Yeah, this is the general fund. A little different. You see how it's that difference? The taxes is five point one million dollars levy to this. So it's a little different, just to show y'all what we got going on. Um, senior taxes, youth taxes. It's revenue, I mean, this was all coming in. Auction sale, five hundred dollars. What y'all sold? Y'all don't sell them back taxes for them properties? Check out going on. Three thousand dollars to a job fair. Hold on, I wanna cough in here. This is revenue, y'all. This not negative. So just when I'm just showing y'all, I say revenue is plus. I'm kinda just looking at it. Ah, nobody putting no grant income. Ain't nobody about to play with that shit. Taste of Thornton. They have a prospective Thornton Township general fund revenue. They, they have a budget for eleven thousand? For that? Y'all have another taste of Thornton coming up? They meant eleven, eleven thousand dollar budget. Don't, so when Tiffany start talking about it. They meant eleven, eleven thousand dollar budget, don't, so when Tiffany started talking about it? I don't know, we will get into that, it say Taste of Thornton. Pound shit. Didn't that way Tiffany do a little drinking? So that's the revenue. And that's supposed to be coming in from the Taste of. So that's why I said I don't, I wanna look at this before I go live with y'all, be talking, cuz y'all know I'll be having to talk it out of my head. Look like they gonna have another Taste of Thornton coming up. These are um. It gotta be. This is the revenue and this is the expenditures, then it doesn't say expenditures, but it has to. They have the salary, a portion of the insurance coming out of here, payroll. Let's see, I'm trying to see if there's anything like that just stand out, and y'all know where I'm gonna go down to, right? Any special projects? And that's not a lot. Alright, computer database fifty four thousand dollars, which I'm about to do, update it, the whole town. There go y'all loan payments. One point one million dollars. Oh yeah. They planning to pay them loans back that Tiffany done took, there go your loan payment right there. That's the plan for the year to pay one million back. One point one million. Hopefully Tiffany ass out there and don't get y'all plan distracted, but Weedman gonna get her. Don't pay no mind, I'm watching y'all, they still in the back. Weedman gonna get her, she like, no, y'all gonna stick to his shit. And she gonna look at Tiffany, and Tiffany like, she's right there. Lock her up. Alright, let me see. Um. This look pretty standard. It does not look bad. I'm gonna go and cross reference it from years prior to Tiffany and in years with her involved. And then we'll do our um. That'll be around the time we do Lori Lightfoot two point O. We're gonna do Lori Lightfoot two point O for Dalton and one for Thornton. And that is not to um discredit uh or downgrade what Ms. Lightfoot did. I, I admitted towards the end of my life that it wasn't Ms. Lightfoot's fault. It is not her fault. She gonna do it so much, but I will not make an excuse for obstruction. That is what it is. I can see, there's times that I have walked out of a job cuz I stood up for myself. And I said, aw shit, got to my car, said, damn, you got two kids. And no kids father, what the fuck is wrong with you? Yes, I had several conversations with myself like that. Cuz I had to just give it all up, because if I didn't, being involved in that facility and then within that dynamics. I would have been the one that would have lost, lost my license, lost everything. Cuz they be quick to turn on you, just like Tiffany did to um. Who is it, Staples? Who was her number one hitter with the top hours? Because he was sick of it? Shout out to you Staples. You are involved in that Alexis Wilson case. I got my eyes on you. So just because you a victim now, don't mean that Grace Leva feel too sad, cuz it's karma. I said it. You be with bad, you get bad. There ain't no levels to evil. Oh, it's okay here, but it's not okay here. Oh, you're gonna get what you get. That's why I'm such a square. That's why people don't like me. They feel judged. Yeah, oh Officer Terry Young, Terry Young, okay, but no, Staples, okay. It's Staples that's involved and Terry, both of them. It's Terry and Staples, thank you for correcting me. They're both involved in Alexis case. Fuck around, I'm gonna show you pictures, I'm gonna show you their name, even investigation. Oh, so thank you for correcting me. I appreciate it, I don't like them all. I don't like them all, if you ain't taking stand to walk away, I don't fuck with you. Thank you for the correction though, you already know I be making mistakes, I'm bad with names. I'll be better. Alright, they about to get started again babes, y'all, I'm gonna shut up. Oh, that's the food, Taste of Thornton is the food event, I thought that was the wine event, is food and wine? They have, and I guess they have it yearly. So when Tiffany was like, we have it every year. Her argument was insufficient because the fact, is the fact that she's not presenting the contracts and how the money is being spent. And I think she went over the budget, remember? Kiki, is that what she had, Kiki Wine is there, was that? That one? Spending all that money? So it was Terry Young. Thank you, let me write that down. I don't know why Officer Staples in my head. Cuz he did, Officer Staples, I think that's the lady or whoever she is, they did something to my Lexi. That's why Staples in my head. They allegedly did something to my Lexi that I didn't like, so I apologize, cuz that's the name that stand out in my head.
Motion, I want to resume the board meeting. Second. Okay, trustee Carlisle?
Yes.
Trustee Leavitt?
Yes.
Right, so now we are on item six, action coming out of closed session.
I would like to make a motion to terminate effective immediately Kamal Woods.
Second.
Trustee Leavitt?
Yes.
Trustee Carlisle?
Yes.
Supervisor Proton Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Third on the motion.
I would like to make a motion to terminate effective immediately William Moore.
Second.
Okay, trustee Leavitt?
Yes.
Trustee Carlisle?
Yes.
Supervisor Proton Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Right, next we have item seven, adjournment. Do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Trustee Carlisle?
Yes.
Trustee Leavitt?
Yes.
Supervisor Proton Gonzalez.
Yes, meeting adjourned.
Alright, good job, that was so.
Thank you everybody, have a good night.
So, so cool, so calm, cool, collective, let's go. Talking about handling the business. What the fuck, what you gonna do now? With your boyfriend, guys to go. Yes, I'm so excited. Man, I could put the panda head in for this. This was calm, cool, collective, and guess what, y'all? Y'all know what I'm about to do before we go into our next lesson. Why are you detaining me? You about to lose your job. You about to lose your job, get this dance. You about to lose your job cuz you are detaining me for nothing. I'm too fucking excited. I'm more excited than the Dalton residents. Okay, my corny ass over here farting by myself, you over there watching and partying. Thank you Jesus Lord, we got this thug. Right here. Out of the grips of the society, he was, he was around kids. We still don't know what this jigga did. But he made a hundred thousand dollars plus. Because he was dealing with this one, we'll put it on the screen. The bird, 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 the bird is the word, now let's see. How long do y'all think he's gonna stay with Henry? And do you think, no, no, I didn't get the, I ain't gonna get, I ain't got two hundred likes. I, only if I get two hundred likes, I'll put the panda on baby. We ain't got that many people here today. But this is what I wanna ask. What do you, how long do you think, let's make a bet. How long do you think that Kamal is gonna stay with Henry till April? Or she about to lose her man, get this dance, I about to lose that boy, get his dance. Ah, he about to stop that divorce right now down here. He said, oh hell no, we ain't gonna be able to pay for shit. She getting high. My whole three years of being separated, it's on the news, chasing after this lady. Lady had millions of dollars. And now? Nah. Kamal gonna go back to his wife. He gonna go back to his wife, when y'all think, let's make, I, I, do y'all thing, let's put. Okay. One in the chat, Kamal's gonna go back to his wife. Two in the chat, he gonna ride or die with Tiffany Henry, let me know. While I'm getting our next clip together, that's what I meant to say, I said lesson. Cuz I actually, y'all know girl, I be teaching all type shit, I was like, before the next lesson, we're gonna, look at my, my corny ass, like before the next lesson? No, but um hit one, yes, he's going to be out there, two, he's going to uh stay, or ride or die. Cuz I, I don't think he's gonna do it at all, and I don't think he's gonna last. Gay, yes, bye bye, Mr. Moore, that one already. He's a non-factor. So he's gonna, I think Mr. Moore is not gonna disappear. I think Mr. Moore is going to continue to be around because he's a weirdo. And he's just a weirdo, he's like the type of guy that's, that's almost fucking holding Henry's pocketbook. One day when he was walking out the, I was like, what the hell, do he have a pocketbook on? But that was his bag. I had to, I really had to be like, okay, alright. Yeah, I know you think he a bitch, you know, cuz I'm like, he holding, he holding her bag. Alright, so we have a lot of people that stream right now, that's streaming at Dalton, Dalton meeting. I wanna show you one person and then we're going to um. Cuz y'all know I like to bring up new people, I'm not biased, everybody doing their thing, different perspective, different view. So we're gonna look at the CB. CBC, is it? But I wanna show you Amir A A Shakur. Now, he is an activist out there in Chicago, I don't know this man, but I know that he um was streaming live. And I guess he's building his platform up, I don't know if he's connected to the Chicago Street Chasers. Uh, I'm trying to find out all of about him, but I do see that he went live and I loved it. And he has good shots, so I was going to play the first few, you know, of everybody talking in the meeting. But at this point, what I wanna do is just get to the meat and butter. So I'm gonna share y'all his stuff, the reason why is because he has clear picture. Um, he is catching footage. Sometimes you can't always listen to everybody lives, I give y'all, everybody got different personalities, things, so. I always give y'all opportunity to listen to new people who I meet. Or I see, so that's his. But we're gonna go to the, to the local nodes, they funky ass wanna come and step it on us, CBS Chicago was their live. So we're gonna use their shot. And what we're gonna do, all I wanna, I want us to look at Keith Freeman's part. That's it, I'm gonna look at Keith Freeman's part, we gonna talk about it. And then we gonna um close all this session, I'm gonna get myself cute a little bit. Come back and we gonna read what's happening with Pablo, so how about it, let me get a little cute, maybe drink a little tea. Cuz I literally just started, like, oh my god. I was like, he's on and I just press start. Look at this, look at this, look at this, look at this motherfucker, sorry. My grandma came out, I don't trust him, look at this. This man is done no good. Okay, that's the Levi, I'm the Levi Haitian grandmother that came out, I don't trust him, that's my grandma. If I could suck my teeth so long, look at his face. Look at his face. Just.
As a pleasure, we serve it our anniversary for sixteen years of being at the wonderful Christmas in the church.
Look at him.
Is invited to come out at eleven o'clock this Sunday.
I don't like. I'm trying not to judge him, but it's too late, he judged himself. Now, let's just go on to when he talks about his projects. That's what I wanna listen to. That was the most important part, and he said Janice Johnson, no, that other lady snitched on Janice Johnson. And I think Janice, Janice Johnson is his um, his um right here man. That's what I think, that's my, my freaking opinion.
Alright, wherever you would like.
Oh. Y'all want me to get a little, can I get a little messy? Y'all want me to get messy? Do your woman again messy. Nobody like me anyway. Alright, let's hit it, before we play this. Let's go to. Shut up, they like, she can't stop. Yep. Hold on, y'all. Don't worry, I'll find it. Um. I just looked at her stuff, hold on one second, y'all, don't pay no mind of me, I'm, I'm trying to pull something up real quick. Before we watch it, we gonna give y'all opinion of somebody that y'all know a lot of people don't give a damn about, but I'm gonna do it anyway. Because we gotta talk about it. Hold on a second, shout out to Nate Fields. Here we go. Now, I'm gonna take a chance because this person, I gotta talk. She kinda went to the left. And she put out a cease and desist on everybody. So that's why I said fuck it, I ain't talking about a hoe. I don't want no trouble. But this is. Your mayor who's trying to run for mayor, this is her opinion about what she saw on Dalton meeting that we gonna watch. So I'm gonna play, I know y'all like, but the real people, you know, we like to hear everybody's stuff, we don't have a hate trade, we just like, fuck it, what, what you talking about? So let's listen to what she gotta say, let me find out, she gonna put her hat on like Melana, you don't wanna be Melana, girl.
Wednesday afternoon, I just wanted to come by and do a quick video to give my views and opinions on last night um board meeting. So as some of you all may have seen, the young gen, um tall gentleman that um at the end that stood up and gave a comment, that was the infamous Mr. Keith Freeman. Now, I want you all to, to really stop playing in the faces of these residents. This man has not been to work in maybe over a year. It's been a minute, he has not been at work, he's been remote from home. Now, it amazes me, all of a sudden, now that the Lori Lightfoot reveal has come and gone, now all of a sudden. Um, he can show his face, we have not seen him. This man has worked from home and made thousands of dollars off of the people in the village of Dalton. And it amazes me how all of these people, and I got to keep reiterating. All of these people that was Team Tiffany, that worked with her, that I'm quite sure helped her misappropriated funds. It's amazing how now um that the feds are involved and, and you know, folks have indictments on them, the feds are looking at them. Now all of a sudden, they've turned over a new leaf. Y'all got to stop playing in the faces of the people that lives in this village. This administration. These trustees. Y'all really, really do think these people in this village. do think these people in this village are dumb. So you take the guy that worked for Tiffany. And because he's a whistleblower. Um, now all of a sudden, you know, we got all this grace for him. He's this good guy, you know, he's working with the trustees. So you mean to tell me the man that helped put the village in the situation that is in. Now all of a sudden, he's just the next best thing to God. Y'all, y'all gotta stop playing. Stop playing with me. Stop playing in the faces of these uh, people. And then you wonder why the governor will not respond. Why would he? You want him to get rid of Henyard. But you want the people that helped Henyard jack up the village, stay in office. But you want him to come correct a problem that you guys are insisting on keeping in office. Y'all got, y'all can't, y'all cannot be serious. You cannot make this stuff up, like. Make it make sense.
Alright, I just had to put that there. I was listening, I was like, whoop. I can't contest. Um, I don't care who said it. I wasn't big on Keith Freeman. I'm not big on people who do selective crimes and decide to tail on their code D. And then they a whistleblower, I'm not, that don't work well in the hood. People like that don't survive long. So I'm not used to that, I'm not used to that. So I'm kinda with her with that, it's weird to me. I'm, I have unless there's a real need for me to keep this person and deal with this person. But if it's more detriment, meaning that the trust that I have with the person is gone. I would rather do without that person and then kinda start fresh. But I'm different. Now, I don't know why the board couldn't vote him out. When Tiffany was like, hey, you don't wanna fire him, I got that clear. And people didn't like the fact that I highlighted that the board did not vote him out. He is just a man. If they fired the CEO of a corporation, it doesn't mean that all the departments shut down and they don't know what the fuck to do, like everybody, thousands of people working businesses are retarded. They know what to do. He's not the key. So I didn't understand, and if he was the key. Why didn't they get an efficient amount of information released to Lori Lightfoot? It says a lot to me. It does. So let this gentleman talk. I don't trust him. Shut the hell up. Listen to his full plan again. You let me know what you think and I'll let you know what I think. But when I was watching somebody live and I had to be quiet, cause I be creeping. I had to say, duh, I don't trust him. I said, don't trust him. And that's all I could put in somebody chat. Cause I don't want them to think like you coming in my chat, taking my shine, nothing. But I couldn't, I couldn't help it, I was like, don't trust him. I was like, shut up, shut up, shut up, shut up. Let's play.
Kinda elaborate so that the community understands what is being done. Uh, so the Players Park Development is a project that will bring a semiconductor uh, ma- uh, light manufacturing company to Dalton. Um, it will also bring some much needed community improvements, uh, baseball fields, uh, football fields, soccer fields. It's right, um, I believe the project is slated for a write-off of Dalton Avenue and Expressway. Um, right now, we're just in the discussion phase, uh, so what the company is asking is, is they're asking for the support of the board to start exploring the options. Now, this is not something that's set in stone, we're at the beginning phases, the infancy phases of this project. But I wanted to have, I wanted to put it on the agenda and I wanted the board to get the proposal so that we can start setting up meetings uh, with the company for the board and uh, the board of trustees to discuss it with them. As well as to set up uh, some community meetings, uh, possibly some committee meetings to discuss the overall proposal. I think it's a great idea. I believe the park district has been working on this for the past uh, year and some change. I know that the project has been um, mentioned uh, for over maybe five or six years, but we're in the infancy stages, so uh, it's a really good project. Uh, I think everyone here would probably say that we probably need some, some more community engagement projects, so. Light manufacturing, community engagement, I think it's a win-win for everybody. Um, if you guys have any questions, feel free to reach out to me. I probably can't answer any questions right now, but feel free to reach out to me. I'd be more than happy to not only answer your questions, but set up some times for you guys to talk to the um, people that are proposing the project.
Okay, I will add a little bit more on there as well. The investors are former Dalton residents and grew up in the, in the community of Dalton. They had, we have invited them previously, I would say in December to come do a presentation along with the individual that did the presentation for one for seven hundred Harvard. Uh, the scheduled, there was a scheduled clash, but they will be brought to the community for further discussion. At this moment, I believe we're just discussing a letter of intent that's a non-binding.
Correct.
Uh, but we, we do wanna make sure that the community is aware of other projects that uh, we are working towards uh, towards fulfillment and a more economic development for the community, but I'll, you'll have to see if any board member has questions.
I just would like to know if um, maybe, I know Keith Freeman said that they, this is the infancy stage. But would they be able to do a presentation if I'm forced?
We can set up a time. I'll set up a time for them to come do a presentation where you guys uh, individually, maybe we can set up a community meeting, you know, before uh, the next board meeting. I'll work on it.
Thank you.
And I can say, I, I've been sick.
I want y'all to listen. I hope y'all know what he's actually trying to bring. Cause I had to listen, cause I understand at first what he said, but he's trying to bring a company that manufactures semiconductors. Do y'all know what that is? Okay? Um, you want to know what a semiconductor is and what type of job this type of factory will bring to your area. Um, this is the highly skilled profession. They deal with manufacturers that involves complex series of process that transform raw materials into finished devices. This process typically involves stages of using fiber optic, so I don't know um, what type of manufacturing facility this is. But it conducts a, you know, doing fiber optics, packaging assemblies of these semiconductors. It has something to do with electricity. And I want you guys just to pay attention, cause y'all already have a feces factory there. Now, you wanna make sure that whatever big ass project being brought to y'all, that is gonna bring some actual money to the area. One thing that I'm really not big on is um, Amazon. But when Amazon come to your com- your area, you gonna have some jobs. They do slave ship, whatever. You know, we'll talk about that. But you wanna be realistic as, as the residents to realize what's coming in. So that means that you're going to bring outside people there, which can bring money, generate money from the workers. But do you have the skilled programs to fill those positions that's needed? What type of positions needed? And y'all don't wanna just be maintenance. Y'all wanna make sure that whatever they bringing in, y'all be able to pack the house out, apply for jobs. Oh, I don't, where did I hear it? I can't even remember, cause I was sick when I was listening. They said that they had some type of um, job fair. In Harvey. In Chris Clark. And one of his friends or whatever was like basically controlling the hiring process and how was it working? Um, this is allegedly, cause of my brain is cloudy, but I remember this. So this is the type of shit that's going on in y'all area. It's still a lot of favoritism and things, so whatever this is. Really figure it out. Cause I don't wanna end up with another shit factory. This right here may sound big and fancy, but if you can't fill the positions with the jobs and the skills. You're bringing the farming market into your town. You're bringing people who are gonna gingerfire your area. And that's what I told my son, we're in a, one of the, we're gonna be in one of the most competitive markets. Thank you to honeymoon for liking and listening to my commentary outside of Dalton. I told my son, right now, no matter who you are, you better make sure you have as many skills as possible, that you'll be able to survive and make something happen if these lights go off, that you'll have that skill that is needed. Because, one. The tone allegedly that Trump, Trump set with the um, the equal uh, equity removing that. He is allegedly setting the bar higher, saying that, hey, people who are disabled. People from the rural country, black people too, women, anyone who got funding from there, oh, you had a handout, baby. And we ain't about to do that. That's why you have people with mixed feelings like, yeah, y'all looking for a handout. But then you need to think. Now, the standard should be based on merit. Who's gonna make it? And that's what I told my son. Fuck around thinking you know something because you looked on this, when you ain't got no skills. And then somebody out there out, outskill ya. So this is a competitive market, know what's coming to your area, know how it's gonna affect you and how you're gonna get in. Cause there's no more just giving you a job. You gonna have to have that knowledge and that work. I'm just gonna put that out there. And y'all know I'm not a Democrat Republic, I'm a Hebrew. I'm real. And when the system pulling back on you and you ain't got no choice, you better have your brain. Moving forward, that's what I kinda think about the semiconductor manufacturer. I will learn more about it, what jobs they can provide, you know what I'm saying? And we gonna talk about it more. Where the hell you get this idea from, sir? Are you trying to gingerfire Dalton? On the low. Who has shares into this company? That's the shit y'all really gotta look at from the red, because it's so corrupted. Around judges, lawyers, all of them got shares in this thing. And that's why they won't touch Tiffany. You never know, I'm just saying allegedly. You see what I'm saying? That's where deep diving coming in. We can't keep looking at the surface. The surface is getting us running around in circles, running around in circles, and Tiffany's still not locked up. Tiffany's so bold, and I gotta say, she went to the feds. She drove wherever she went to the feds, to go tell on Jada Di. Is that? I know she crazy out her damn mind. But is she that crazy? Or is she that innocent? What the fuck is going on? Moving forward.
Let's deal with them that they do a community meeting before the, the board takes any uh, formal action. That is for us.
That's right.
Yeah, 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 you keep, everything that says.
I haven't seen you guys in so long, this is so weird, you know, just saying. How you guys doing today? Okay, you guys know, and this was kinda what I talked about at the beginning, that I mean, there was a culture of a lot of uh, fighting, so back and forth for so much time that it um, it, it took, it took a growing period, it really did for all of us, so. I'm gonna ask if everybody can give Keith Freeman a round of applause at this time.
Hated it.
What you doing? But I'm gonna call you Derek Walker, so we can go to item C. I'll take it, I'll take it. Item C, I'm sorry, item C is the approval of annual Xerox Business Solutions Services Equipment. Oh, there it is, it's a B.
Yeah, it's a one.
Ooh, okay, I thought you Derek later. Um, discussion approval of Vista National Comprehensive Employment Benefits Package. So I'm not here to present that, that's just our employment benefits. Uh, I believe Bridget Stewart is somewhere here. Since you get, come on Bridget, come on, if, if we can, just so I can uh, say everything. Bridget, if you're okay, I wanna, I'll go through all the items that Keith asked and then we'll come back to the Vista, if that's alright with you. Alright, so I'll come back to Vista for that presentation. Uh, Administrator, if you okay with item C, approval of the Xerox Business Solutions Services Equipment Agreement?
Oh, yes, this is just uh, an agreement, our annual agreement for our Xerox copiers, scanners, the equipment across the village. So this isn't just for the village hall, this is for village hall, public works, police department and the fire department, I believe. Um, I believe that's uh, I believe it's for the contract for the existing printers. But it also adds, I believe, a copier for the, a copier, scanner, printer, all in one for the search office, which is desperate meeting. So, you're very, very welcome.
Okay, and then looking at our policy and the duration of this contract, is it three years?
Every, every year is one year.
One year?
Fantastic.
Every year is one year. Say it again.
The paperwork said three years.
The paperwork says three years. We, we actually, I had them send me another document signed, so the copy that I have is documented, I sent you that one. I told them we were gonna do a yearly renewal, so.
They talking about printer, printers.
I would like to do only annual renewals while we work our way back to solvency.
Absolutely.
Alright, any additional questions from the board? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the agreement that's uh, entered on the uh, agenda?
Motion to accept it, Red.
Second.
Hearing a motion by trustee Stan Brown and a second by trustee Belcher. Uh, we had discussion, so any further discussion? Hearing none, Clarky, please call roll.
Trustee Tammy Brown?
Aye.
Trustee House?
Aye.
Trustee Norwood?
Aye.
And I'm telling you, you will definitely see the.
And no, you don't cut the broadcast off with your shit, ma'am. Sorry, y'all.
Trustee Stan Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Belcher?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay, next we have is the discussion and approval of collective bargaining agreement between the Village of Dalton and APSME Council thirty-one. Administrator Freeman?
Yes. So our public works department, um, the contract, excuse me, the contract for the public works department. The housing department and the water department, uh, we've agreed to a new six-year deal with them the first year. Um, being, it starts at zero percent, which means they didn't ask for any retro, thank God, because we didn't have the money for that. Uh, the next uh, the next five years are progressive, and I believe the terms are in the contract. Um, but this is the start of us trying to figure out how to take care of all of our workers. The service workers are the, the backbone of our community. And for a long time before, uh, before I got here and before the trustees got involved, we really struggled with um, being able to keep up with their contracts. Um, so this is the first time we got ahead. And hopefully, this will give us an opportunity to set the standard for the future contracts, for not only for uh, for APSME, but for the police department, the fire department, uh, and those unions. They work incredibly hard. They're owed every single cent that they get, um, and this will help us, um, McGrath, uh, Mike McGrath and uh, his firm has done a great job of helping us negotiate these contracts. So I appreciate their time and energy and effort, because we were way behind, so thank you, Mike, I appreciate that. And hopefully, this is the start of a, a long, long period of us being able to stabilize uh, the Village of Dalton in a great way. So I'm asking that you approve this contract uh, for the APSME, um, I believe it, it was the local twenty-one ninety-nine?
Yes. Okay, is there a motion for the approval of the contract as stated?
I make a motion.
Second.
So I heard trustee Belcher is the motion, so we gonna fight it out for a second. I think I'll go trustee Tammy Brown.
This for a union contract, y'all, and they talking about moving forward with more contracts to be officially set forth for the police department, fire department. So this is twenty-one ninety-nine. My grandmother used to be a union delegate, so I know what they talking about. Going negotiating contracts. That's why I get it from her, I used to be yelling like, they're damn no good. Those nurses and officials in the hospital, she was a housekeeper. They was like, some of them were so happy to see her leave and some wasn't, because she fought hard as shit. So I understand. So he talking about um, the contracts for the workers, and I'm glad they getting on it early. Not him, but them.
Uh, second. Uh, any further discussion at this time? Hearing none, Clarky, please call roll.
Trustee Tammy Brown?
Aye.
Trustee House?
Aye.
Trustee Norwood?
Aye.
Trustee Stan Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Belcher?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay, next up, item E. Alright. Item E, discussion of collective bargaining agreement between the Illinois Fraternal Order of Police Labor Council, uh, that's also Administrator Freeman.
Uh, this is one of those contracts that I wanna apologize in advance. We got everyone's contract done, but these wonderful ladies that work in the records division, they work incredibly hard. Um, they worked harder than, um, they get a lot of credit for. And this contract, uh, if you don't know, is from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-four. Uh, it's been that long since they had a contract. So we are incredibly grateful to them. We're sorry that it took, took this long to get the contract done, but we finally got a contract done for them. This contract mirrors the contract for the police department's patrol unit, uh, sergeant's division. So their increases will continue to stay at the same rate as those two, uh, as those two unions, these ladies work incredibly hard, these people work incredibly hard. And I appreciate them, and I don't get a chance to tell them, cause I don't like, you know, just popping up in the police department, I'm just being honest. But um, thank you, thank you. I'm sure you guys know that at this point. But thank you, thank you, thank you to all of those, uh, every single person that works in that office.
I don't find it funny at all. I don't find it funny, Keith. No dry jokes.
And um, this is the, this is the contract that you guys deserve, and hopefully we can do better next time, so. I'm asking that you approve the contract for the FOP records section, records division.
Okay, is there a motion to, to approve the contract as stated?
A motion to accept it, Red.
Second.
Alright, hearing a motion by trustee Stan Brown, second by trustee Belcher, any additional discussion at this time?
Uh, I would like to say something. Um, thank you Keith for making it known, the ladies in the records department of the police department. Most of them been there over five to ten years, and they are very deserving of um, getting their contract and making sure, they, they work hard. They, they are the backbones of the police department, making sure. So I'm happy that we are able to um, get this contract moving forward, because they do work really hard.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Any additional discussions? Hearing none, Clarky, please call the row.
Trustee Tammy Brown?
Aye.
Trustee House?
Aye.
Trustee Norwood?
Aye.
Trustee Stan Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Belcher?
Aye.
Motion passed.
I gotta, I'm gonna give it to, I just talk, I talked about, talked shit about Staples, I talked about Terry, talk about how they handle the situation in Dalton Police Station with certain things, but I know the job is not easy. Um, I know, like I said, when I called down there, when the Jedidiah got locked up, they were very nice to me. They gave me whatever information I wanted. Um, even when I called, only one time I had a little back and forth with somebody telling me I can't give freedom of information, information. But other than that, I know there is some hard peo- people who work there, and they're in bad situations, so you gotta give a shout out and love to them, also to my favorite police. I don't talk about her, she's not from Dalton, y'all don't know her, you'll figure it out, but my favorite popo. Um, when I hear her stories and I hear her compassion, and the little things she do, and how she get played and treated, just know my heart goes out to the cops as well. And as I know, my uncle was a federal agent who lost his life most recently, so I do have respect and love to the people who are honorable. But I'm not with that two-side, two-faces thing, I'm just gonna call you out. Told you my uncle was bad, bad, not as a police, he was just a sexual idiot, but he was a great police, and I was just real, you know what I'm saying? So, it is what it is. Shout out to the Dalton Police, to the good ones that's suffering through this shit. Cause it's hard to be, to deal with kindness and be a cop. And there's some cops that actually deal with kindness. My favorite cop, she kind as hell, she too nice. I'm like, girl, just say no. She know what I'm talking about.
Alright, next up, item F, approved settlement agreement between the Village of Dalton and Jessica Burns and May Burns, uh, Administrator Freeman?
Uh, well, I'll defer to uh, I'll defer to Attorney McGrath for this one.
But if we can, I'll pause this one too, I I don't, I don't want you to keep standing there all day.
Thank you.
So we'll, we'll, we'll come back, if you don't, if you're okay, Mike, we'll, we'll pause to go through, uh, we'll come back to L. Next, item G is approval of a business license name from Tac Group LLC to follow the business names as listed on the agenda, uh, Administrator Freeman?
Yes, so Tac Group is the company that owns St. Patrick's on Lincoln Avenue and uh, Sibley Boulevard. Uh, when they applied for their business licensing, the business licenses under the Tac Group. Uh, for insurance purposes, they're asking that we change the names for each individual uh, venue located inside of the building. So I am asking that the Board of Trustees uh, uh, allow for them to change the name on the license that you guys already approved at the previous meeting to the license, the name listed on the agenda.
So this was uh, already approved, any additional risk or exposure that we would have changing the name?
No, I think the, the, it actually, it actually helps with the coverage, so under the one COI, uh, Certificate of Insurance, there would only be, uh, there's only a s- uh uh, a certain threshold, I believe it's a five million dollar threshold. So under this COI, each individual level would have a five million dollar threshold, would be, would be a maximum thirty million dollars for the entire building, which, again, would help us. Uh, God forbid something happened, but at least, you know, each individual place is covered. So we wanna make sure that um, they still have to go through the process, like they're still in it, at at the phase. I know uh, trustee Brown and I had a conversation today about making sure that they finish all the work, that they get, all of their formal inspections are completed, that they did everything that they're supposed to. But right now, this is just um, sort of formality with the name change. Uh, but we will make sure that they do everything that they're supposed to do before they're open, and we'll make sure that they, they cover all their bases. I I think it's a wonderful project, and I think it's something that Dalton deserves.
Thank you.
Alright, this is one thing I just wanted to kinda put out there and um, ask, and I have to clarify. There are people out there, content creators, who are saying that allegedly Tiffany has some damn ownership in this St. Patrick TKA or T-T-A-K. Y'all remember that it was, we kinda went over the St. Pat- we went over the TKA and then figured out that they was doing business at St. Patrick's? What you hearing there is that they want all three the name that they're doing business as on the license, because for insurance policies that allow each entity to be insured. But my question is, why the hell do Tiffany think she has a stake in these businesses? Um, according to another content creator, cause I'm not gonna, this is all allegedly, they said that Tiffany has some stake in here. And that that's why the lady wouldn't go against Tiffany or something, I don't fucking know. Please clarify, because my thing is that I think that Tiffany's doing the same lowjack move. Get a business to build the area up, fix it, make it look nice, and never ever give it license or what it needs to be functionable. Um, eventually, you know, um, bankrupting the person and having them pay for things and just never get it, and then she end up taking over. That's what I think she's doing, but allegedly, they said she has a stake? Okay, because I said, I ain't never see that. When you look up St. Patrick and TK, that TKA or whatever, it don't have no Tiffany Henyrd there. So I just wanted to clarify that, that there's a misconception, consumption that Tiffany owned something, when she made that video with them talking about, we're breaking the ground. How the fuck you so excited about breaking the ground on somebody else's stuff? Unless she was putting on, stealing it. So I just wanna throw that out there, I don't think she has a stake in there. From what I've seen, it looks like it's just the other lady's name, her name is Tiffany something else, and there's no Tiffany Henyrd there, so don't let them fool you that any of Tiffany Henyrd um, actions was justified. It was not. This lady still has outstanding license and things from Pablo's. They're basically blaming it on too many bars being located in too many areas, in the same area, but that's a zoning thing. So if your zoning laws was coordinated correctly, it will only be a, be able to have certain entity like a liquor store this far from a school or things like that. But obviously, your zoning is not set up correctly, and it allows to have more than three places to hold liquor license bars and things. That is part of zoning department too, baby. So y'all gotta fix it all the way around the board. You can't just say, oh, I'm not giving license, there's too many liquor stores around here, and that, cause I said so, and this ain't up to date, and they not fancy. If that's not part of zoning requirements, you can't just put a restriction on it, unless it's the ordinance to say, within this town, we don't give liquor license. For example, in my um, town I live in, till to this day, we don't have one liquor store in the town I live in. And they make hella money here. I don't know why they think they so good and bougie when this place had a square, any place they had a square was hanging black people. But anyway, they don't, no liquor store, but the town right next to me had liquor store like fifteen minutes away, but that's understandable, but it's i- if it's in ordinance? So when they question um, the other party that has something to do with the license, in Dalton, that person did tell the judge that there is enough for St. Patrick's to get their license, so I don't, I wanna clarify, I don't think Tiffany had any stake in St. Patrick's, she don't own St. Patrick's. I think she's trying, she's just trying to steal it from under this lady, and that's all I gotta say about that.
Is there, so hearing this, is there, is there a motion to approve the business license name change?
A motion.
You hearing a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Hearing, I heard motion, trustee Norwood, second was that trustee Belcher?
Yes.
Okay, any further discussion?
So, I I just have a question, so, cause I see on here, so each one, each level, they're still using Tac, but it's it's doing business as for the insurance purposes for, so like.
So, so Tac Group LLC, so Tac Group LLC will change, so one level is Tac Group LLC doing business as St. Patrick's Beverage Depot.
Right.
The next one is PTK though, as opposed to the Tac Group, one is PTK LLC.
I I be making stuff as I go, I apologize, PTK, y'all know what I was trying to say.
So um, I tried to list them all individually and separately, um, so some of the names won't be Tac Group, some of them have other names, yeah.
Okay, alright, listen.
Okay, any additional questions? Hearing none, Clarky, please call the row.
Trustee Tammy Brown?
Aye.
Trustee House?
Aye.
Trustee Norwood?
Aye.
Trustee Stan Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Belcher?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay, thank you very much, I think that is. Yes, sir?
Excuse me, I I got, I'm a little late on this here. Do we have a uh, a opening day for St. Patrick's? We've been given a timeframe, when you gonna open up?
No, I don't, I don't have an opening day, but as soon as I get it, uh.
Yeah, to my knowledge, at this time, I believe there's still this extra steps that they need to do, uh, so I'm unaware of an opening day, but I think that there's still additional due diligence needs to be done.
You guys always know more information than I do. You guys beat me to it.
Alright, this, this Mrs. Allen knows people, so you gotta, you gotta hang out with her. Alright, well, that's gonna conclude um, the items for Administrator Freeman, thank you very much.
Thank you, wonderful to see you guys.
Let me find out CBS News, we ain't never using your broadcast again. What you got going on? You're jumping from random items. Okay? Now, I wanted to go over that, and now we're gonna go over this lady, who she talks about, Janice Jass Johnson. Let's listen to the proof that obstruction is still going on in Dalton. They knew that they didn't have insurance since August, in this borough, Janice Jass, afraid Tiffany Henyrd allegedly. And Keith Price, or whoever, the female, whoever she afraid of, didn't tell the board. The fuck? What's wrong with people? But I'm a renegade, I'm a renegade, y'all need to come over here to Grace Side, I'll put a battery in your back, and tell you, you gonna meet God by yourself. Don't be afraid, stand up for your rights. Move on out. God's gonna bless you outside the door, when you make the right decisions. Stop being bullied, y'all. Stop it, it's enough. I'm gonna be like, um, what's his name? I don't know, I'm gonna get to her, you know, get distracted, what is it, um, I was about to say Fire Marshal Bill, which I remember, he was like, uh, stand up for your rights. Move on out, move on out, let's go, y'all, cut it the hell out. I want no more excuses about y'all scared, shit. Get y'all damn open concealed carry out there, and call it a motherfucking day. Okay? That's all I'm saying. Get your shit. I was listening to her. Damn, they're not talking yet.
Good evening, everyone. So what you have before you should be a financial overview of the um, insurance renewal proposal uh, for the Village of Dalton. And basically, what we're looking at.
I I just gotta say it, you said it, baby Dex, this is what it is, the resident applause and the cheer into action with the board members demonstrates a possible reason why the village was finessed. They was like, they was basically like, they was, they were cheated, right? That's what you trying to say? They was fleeced so ea- easy, that's what you saying? Fleeced? And I'm saying finessed, that's what it was. You can't be happy for the bare minimum. Fuck it. I'm not happy, cause you showed up to do what you was supposed to do months ago. Now is get on your job, walk like you got some fire on your ass, or you going down. That's just how we were, we were raised.
Uh, the first off, does everyone have the copy of the financial summary letter? Basically, this is just gonna provide a financial overview of what the Village of Dalton will be paying going forward for your medical, dental, and vision lines of coverage. Um, your insurance proposal or your insurance programs do in fact renew March first. So what you have again before you are the um, details of your medical insurance. So your medical program with Blue Cross and Blue Shield will be increasing almost twelve percent, eleven point nine percent. Right, you'll see what that uh, annual increase is a little over two hundred thousand dollars for your medical insurance. And initially, though, came in at nineteen point seven, but we were able to negotiate that down to eleven uh, point nine.
I had to look that up, y'all, I thought I was on point, baby Dex, I was like, please, what the hell is she? It says to take someone money dishonest by charging too much money. Thank you for teaching us that. I'm like, what, finesse? Is that what you trying to, I ducked a new slang for me, baby, thank you for teaching me that. Yep, okay, let me listen to her, sorry. I had to look that up, like, what does that mean?
So a little shy of twelve percent. Um, your program with Lincoln Financial, your dental, that did uh, come in with a three percent increase for the upcoming plan year. That equates to a little thirty-eight hundred dollars for the year. Okay, then your vision program uh, with IMed, there was actually no change to what you're currently paying today. That program is currently in a rate lock, meaning that the increase, there is actually no increase, the premiums will remain flat. However, your life insurance is actually, um, we gotta do some work on that. That program was actually terminated and canceled by uh, Blue Cross and Blue Shield due to uh, non-payment of premium. So what we're gonna be doing.
Don't people pay their life insurance over years, and then the company match it? So I wonder what happened if they just, they have to start all over? Do you think their premium's gonna be really high? You know that life insurance shit, like, it goes up at a certain time, so it's good when you start young, you know what I'm saying? I wonder how this gonna affect them.
Is um, we actually have some proposals for other carriers that I'll be working with Keith and Janice to get that program reinstated. With a different vendor or carrier. Questions?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Absolutely. So when was anybody made aware that it had canceled?
Well, the program terminated back in August of twenty-four. Uh, yeah.
What's up? Y'all did good, she made the Belcher face, she said, go girl.
Again, folks, there were several.
She doing good, she did it, she did it.
Um, that were submitted to uh, the administration, your administrators, um.
Go ahead, girl, she put the wood face on, thank you. She put the nursing face on, give them no energy, she was like.
Weren't paid. So I don't have exact dates of the communications, but there were several communications that were sent to the Village of Dalton about that. And as a result of um, you know, the policy being terminated, Blue Cross and Blue Shield will no longer reinstate, so we'll have to find a new vendor. And we've got some proposals um, that we can take a look at. So I'll be working with Janice, like I said, and Keith to ensure that we get that reinstated or active again ASAP.
Second, who was your statement, Allen? Trustee Belcher?
Um, yeah, yeah.
Okay, um, I will say.
She like, I'm, I'm just over this shit. Fuck it, I'm done.
Of course, we wanna have more dialogue on that, that's um frustrating as a board member, to hear, to say the least. I think uh, I would ask that um, additional uh, correspondence in particular, if there's things coming behind it, we can also have the board members copied on there, so we can um uh, cover one another, but uh, I will report the future conversation.
Absolutely.
Any other uh, comments from other board members? Did we do a, uh, did I do a motion to approve or nothing?
I I gotta know.
Okay.
More questions?
Yeah, so it it renewed, you said it renews March first, so is this like every year that is, it renews?
Yes, um, but for the vision insurance right now, we actually, that was actually in a four-year rate guarantee, so it's still obviously in the rate guarantee, and I believe your coverage that you have with Blue Cross, the life insurance, for example. On occasion, we may be able to secure a two-year rate lock, but this year, it it is an annual renewal.
Okay, and.
Did you know that Nvidia options increased by an average of twenty-four?
I tell you, don't do that to us, get on my damn nerves.
When these are sent over, is it just a quote that's sent over, and somebody looks at it and say, okay? Or is there any like, okay, we can, we can move this, you know, negotiate with it, I guess?
Absolutely, yeah, um, so typically, you know, when, whenever we, whenever a group is up for renewal, um, like I said, your uh, programs renew March first. We typically are maybe seventy-five to ninety days out, we start that marketing process. And we go out to all the different vendors, uh, the different carriers, to try to see what is the best option for um, the Village of Dalton. The medical program, you know, Blue Cross is obviously a catalog carrier, so we really didn't have much competition there. Um, and you renew the medical, for example, those plans will remain as they are, no, absolutely no changes to the benefits. Um, but the life insurance, you know, again, we did shop that, and we do have some competitive uh, carriers that would actually be a lot lower than what you were paying. But the the difficulty is, you know, we unfortunately, we can't pay the Village of Dalton's bills, um, so, or, you know, the invoices. Our job is to just advise and convey the message that, hey, Blue Cross is saying you. that, hey, Blue Cross is saying you guys need to submit payments. And if that doesn't happen, they will, you know, submit another request for payment and that goes directly to the village of Dalton. And our job is to just convey the message again that, hey, you guys gotta get this done. If you don't, then X, Y and Z will take place. And that's unfortunately what happened.
And your point of contact is who?
Um, Janice Johnson.
Alright, thank you.
Snitches don't get stitches today, dawg. We gonna continue to deep dive and find out about Janice Johnson. If y'all don't remember, I had did a little bit on Jan- Janice Johnson. And I remember I had pulled up, y'all remember Janice Johnson? I had pulled up um her salary. Y'all don't remember that? Hold on, I'll pull it up as I remember. Uh, turn the shit. This is the um complaint Dalton Discipline Union headed legal, this was um Janice John- anything her name was in is up here. Her lawsuit, um Janice Johnson is involved in uh the lawsuit with Williams, the lady who was over the licensee before and they put her in the basement and changed her job. She, when I put Janice Johnson, the case with Keith Freeman comes up as well, talking about village administrator. I'm just, y'all know, I just, I'm, we about to get off this live real quick. But I I I was like, alright, cool, we gonna figure out who she is and we had did this before. But I put her name in and look, his lawsuit came in, came up, they connected. Janice Johnson, you see these all highlighted, these the ones that I read to you already. So this is the proof that I brought her names up weeks ago. Mayor Jo- um Henyrd ordered Janice Johnson, Director of Administrative Service to draft a termus letter, termination letter to Keith Freeman. So she was doing that fire Keith Freeman, like, and they had Keith Freeman gotta work together. How unfucking comfortable is that? She get the draft letter and then have Keith Freeman working together right now. This is terrible. All of these has a lot of her name, let me see. Ah, y'all know I, my ADHD about to kick in, we ain't about to do that. We been live for hour and forty-six minutes. Now, y'all hear my voice a little raspy. I was thinking about coming back in an hour and get y'all caught up on these court cases that I talked about. I have things that I can read from you from a few of the court cases that I talked about. So if I don't come back tonight at eight, I need y'all to put y'all notifications on and y'all could be part of the replay game. Because I'm gonna do, if I don't come back at eight, cause I'm right, and I don't feel like getting cute. Cause I was on for two hours, I was like, fuck it. Um we're gonna come back tomorrow at around eleven or twelve AM. We're gonna read the reply to the case I was telling you, we got word from Lacey Lewis, dawg. I see him up in this, all in this paper line, I said, oh shit. And then I got some other updates. So y'all just let me know what it is. Y'all know I'm always here for you. Uh I wanna say thank you for everyone who, ooh, let me get myself on screen, who's been checking on Grace Leiva. I made it through the fire, through the fever and the cold. And I made it all for you. I got issues. How the hell you come up here, you be singing? Y'all know I like what I do, right? It could be one of you motherfuckers up here, I'll be singing, dancing, laughing and talking. So until then, I want you guys to hit the like button, turn your notifications on. I'll be popping up on them so they don't know what the hell I got going on. Nah, I just be having, listen, I'll be, I'm gonna do this and dawg, so I'm like, give me a minute. So if things change up on you, don't worry, it's probably me that had just had a change of plans. And um just put your notification on and I appreciate you. Again, I wanna send love to my top donator last month. My top donator was, I gotta put it on the screen. Honeymoon, put it on a glass, girl. Get some whiskey, girl. So honeymoon gave me way, uh more than I can ever expect. Whatever she did, she's been consistent. Um if you guys see, if y'all look at the actual GoFundMe for Cora, Cora, if y'all care. I'm the only one that donated. I got another donation this month. I did pay attention, I remember. Miss Melanie, shut up. She donated more than me this year, this month. Thank you. Cora is working towards creating Mother's Day gifts for victims who have lost their self, lost their families through police brutality. And that's what we do here. So I was able to give Cora a little bit more money. I wasn't able to give her a thousand, I wasn't gave her five hundred, but I gave her whatever I could and I'm grateful. And I think she's grateful. And she's making it through because of people like you genuinely love her, support her, don't judge her. And y'all don't judge her, baby girl. And y'all ain't judging Grace, that's why I'm here, baby. Just a hard, me and Alexis was a hard motherfucking cookie to crumble. But guess what? We gonna be here and you gonna have to put some respect on our names. So when I say I love you guys, and I most likely see y'all tomorrow. See y'all tomorrow morning now.